I'd like to call the meeting of the Village of Pales Park to order Monday, September 11th. If the clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Here.
President.
Yep.
Present. Would we please all stand for the badge allegiance, and if you are able, please stay standing afterwards for a moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and in this one with liberty and justice for all.
Let us have a moment of silence in memory of those who tragically lost their lives 22 years ago today, and for their heroic bravery of the first responders who ran into harm's way we will never forget. Thank you, Mayor. I have before me the minutes from the last regular meeting held on August 28th. If there are no corrections or changes, I seek a motion for approval.
I move.
Second.
Hearing the motion is second, but the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Moving on to recognition, proclamations, and appointments and presentations. To proclaim September 18th through the 24th, 2023 National Rail Safety Week. The purpose of this national initiative is to educate and inform the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad railways are private property, enhancing public awareness of dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws. Will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by accidents involving trains and citizens. For more information about rail safety, visit www.cn.ca/railsafety or oli.org. We have no hearings, so I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward in the direction of the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, to approve the proposal from Claude Technics in the amount of $6,515 to purchase a new sewage pump for the 93rd Street Lift Station. B, to adopt an ordinance amending Part 8, Title 2, Chapter 808, Section 808.23 of the Pales Park Village Code in regard to the authorized number of Class F liquor licenses, AY Gas Inc., Pales Park, Illinois. The ordinance states that effective September 11th, 2023, the number of Class F liquor licenses will decrease by one as a result of the change in ownership from AY Gas Inc. to Pales Park Gas and Food Incorporated, located at 12301 South 80th Avenue, and their decision not to sell alcoholic beverages. Item C, to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Pales Park and the Cook County Department of Public Health for the provision of environmental health inspection services, Pales Park restaurant inspections, for the time period of December 1st, 2023, through November 30th, 2024, at a cost of $100 per inspection. D, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated September 11th, 2023, in the amount of $154,289.12. E, to approve the supplemental warrant list dated September 11th for manual pin checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers in the amount of $428,443.2. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
Second.
Hearing the motion is second, but the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Nolich?
Yes. And anybody have any items of old business? Moving on, Board Commission Committee recommendations, there are none. So moving on to information and updates. Public Works and Streets and Recreation Report, Commissioner Patan.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's Public Works Agenda is the 2023 Railway Improvement. So bids were taken for the 2023 Roadway Improvements in September of this month, 2023. There were four plans picked up and four bids submitted. The project was estimated at costing $1,105,498. The bids came in, four of them. One was from Cave Five Construction, and they came in with an estimate of $1,156,494.45. We also had Lindell Brothers, and they came in with their bid, $1,119,951. We had Gallagher Asphalt at $1,66,494.45. And the fourth bid came in from M&amp;J Asphalt at $1,161,671. So as the bids were checked, and the lone responsible bidder is Gallagher Asphalt, they have worked in the village before with no issues, and Public Works recommends that the project be awarded to Gallagher Asphalt. This will be the second year of the three-year, excuse me, $3 million bond project. The staff also recommends giving this project to Gallagher Asphalt. So I move to award the 2023 Roadway Improvement Project to Gallagher Asphalt in the amount of $1,66,494.45.
I'll second that.
And then with that, I'll also have the staff put down on our website all the streets that are included in that new improvement plan, as well as what you can expect from that.
Anybody have any questions? If not, the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Nolich?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Recreation. And of course, last night, the big announcement will be this weekend, our annual Fall Festival. And I'm gonna loop around and come back to it at the end, if you don't mind, Mayor. I'm gonna come around and back to it. Okay, so I'm looking at just some few other special events coming up in the next few months at our Rec Department. Starting off October 8th, which is a Sunday, it's our relaunch of the Senior Club. And we're gonna be entertained by Hugo Elvis, the Elvis impersonator. And that will take place from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM in the Rec Center. This is a wonderful event for our seniors, and Hugo Elvis is a riot. So please come and dance and get involved.
Perfect. He does 50 and over club now.
Fifty, I know.
Really referring to all of us as seniors that are over 50, that's just really hurtful.
Yes, 50 and over, okay. The Rec Center is always asking to please register, because the space is limited. So you can register online, or you can call at 708-671-3760. And then the following day, Monday, October 9th, is Pales Park Oaktoberfest. And we will be having games and activities celebrating our majestic oak trees in our village. The event will take place from 3:30 to 6:30. And there'll be Tiny Talk Fest earlier in the day, specifically for kids under six, and that will take place from 10 to noon. No registration is needed, and this is a free event.
Is that at the Rec Center?
I believe it is.
Yes, okay. Excellent. It's exciting and new.
Yes. Also, October 14th, which is a Saturday, from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM is our Fall Fishing Derby at Horse Tail Lake, which is located at 104th Avenue and Will Springs. And then Sunday, the 22nd of October, is our Pales Park Spooky Shuffle, which is a five and 10K trail walk and a run at Swallow Cliff South. And it's around the corner, so register now. The price goes up after September 30th. The race is in the morning, like I said. And you will, it includes a finisher medal. You get a shirt, and along with post-race stretching, courtesy of Stretch Lab from Worland Park. That's kind of nice. Let's see, and the last event in October is Friday, the 27th. It's the Halloween Party, Trick or Treating on the Green. And then moving on to November, we have the Veterans Day Ceremony, Friday, the 10th. And on the 30th is our annual Village Tree Lighting Holiday Party. And then moving on to December, the 9th will be Breakfast with Santa. So those are some of the future events besides the big one coming up this weekend. Upcoming youth programming. We have youth Taekwondo, it's starting tomorrow at the Rec Center. It'll be on Tuesdays from 5 to 6, and then it's for children ages 5 to 13. And Score More Goals, which is a soccer clinic for ages 9 to 12, starts next Wednesday, the 20th. And the classes will meet at the Village Green every Wednesday from 4 to 5. And then our upcoming adult program, our next pickleball is 101, is Friday, September 22nd, from 10:30 to noon. So all beginners are welcome to learn the basics of this up and coming sport. Second, we have Adult Yoga, starting this week, with Yoga Skill Action, meeting on Tuesday nights from 6 to 7. And the Mind-Embody Fusion Yoga, meeting Thursdays from 10:10 to 11:10 AM. And finally, Adult Strength Training starts tomorrow, September 12th, and meets Tuesday from 10:10 to 11:10. And then a quick note on the Children's Playground. First of all, I want to thank the parents and caregivers for your patience. The mayor, who was formerly the commissioner, and our village manager, and our rec staff, you know, their goal was to have this project done this weekend, and it's gonna happen. So they made their goal. We just had a little bit of weather issues last week and this week. So we're hoping that sometime this week, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, we have the ribbon cutting. But it's all ready to rock and roll, it's just putting on a little film. I think it's like a layer on the track.
It's a color coating on the pathways that lead to the equipment.
Yeah, it just needs some time to cure with the rain, it just sort of, something's bad. So again, I thank you for your patience, but it's gonna, it'll be there for the kids. And I'm kind of excited to see how the kids react to it this weekend, and how they, I'm just, yeah. I'm here with the parents, I have to say, so it's really beautiful, we haven't seen it. So I'm excited to get that going for our kids. And then finally, looking back to this weekend, to our Autumn in the Park, which is Friday and Saturday. So Friday, the festival starts, the green opens at 6, closes at 11. And then Saturday, the parade will kick off at 11, and it starts at 86th Avenue and ends at 90th. So please note that the metro lot will be closed for the parade just from 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM. On Saturday, after the parade, the green will open at 11:30, and will event at 11:00 PM. There is free parking and trolley bus shuttle service. Parking and shuttle information can be found on our website at palespark.org under the 2023 Autumn in the Park Festival. And we're really encouraging everyone to use the trolley. Our parking is limited, and it's hard with the residential streets. And I know as a parent, you think, oh, trolley, really? Believe me, the kids, taking on the trolley, they'll probably think that's the best part of the whole trip. So use the trolley, it'll help our police, it'll help traffic, it just helps everyone all around, and it's running the whole time. So it drops you right off at the Rec Center. We will have about 10 food vendors, we've got 10 artistry vendors, we've got community groups. At the kids' area, there are bouncy houses, we have face painting going on, balloon art, kids crafts, we've got a roaming magician. There'll be plenty of community performances, plenty of demonstrations. There is an adult bags or corn hall, whatever you call it, as a kid, competition hosted by Southside Bags. And that registration can happen on-site, starting at noon till, excuse me, till 1:00. Under the big tents, you know, we've got plenty of space and a state, plenty of space to sit. We've got a stage. And then with beer tent, music and entertainment, it'll be $6 per drink ticket. We'll be serving beer, wine, margarita, and seltzer. Friday night, the band is Hairbangers Ball, which is, it'll be on stage from 7:30 to 10:30. Saturday afternoon, we have Five Guys Named Mo, and they'll be playing from 6 to, I'm sorry, from 3 to 6:00 PM. And then Saturday night's performance, Mike and Joe, and they will be on stage, 7:30 to 10:30. There is an ATM that will be on-site, and credit cards are accepted in the ticket area. And just a little final note, and I'll have Commissioner Polk speak from here, but there'll be some changes, just some security implications that we have had in the past, that our Commissioner Polk and Chief Miller and the staff worked very hard to make sure that our event stays safe. So Commissioner Polk?
Thank you, Commissioner Patan. So given the tenor of the times, we've had a good number of discussions regarding safety, planning, logistics, and incident command that have taken place over the last couple of months. And we've got, I think, a very straightforward and reasonable plan to provide security during the event. So you'll notice that there'll be a good number of uniformed police officers, both from the Pales Park Police Department, as well as other local departments that'll be present, particularly to deal with traffic issues. Those will mainly be officers that come from neighboring jurisdictions and down the grounds. But you'll also notice an enhanced number of particularly Pales Park police officers. The second thing is that we've altered the lighting a little bit. So some of the, I'll just say, less well-lit areas traditionally in the past will be more well-lit this year. In addition, we're going to have, we're gonna utilize technology available to our law enforcement will be in use, and those of you who are very perceptive may actually be able to perceive something. Just some straightforward issues which we've had in the past, but will be enforced again this year. So I'll start with the fact that guests that are 16 years old or under must be accompanied by an adult in order to enter the venue. Everyone's gonna notice the height of visibility and security checks. We'd ask again, as Commissioner Patan emphasized, that you park in the Pales Park Metro Station and take the provided shuttle over to the festival. The shuttle will be staffed by a officer, who will also be in communication with staff command. So if there's any shenanigans going on on the shuttle, we can deal with those appropriately. We also want to let people know that we won't tolerate any laser pointers, coolers, glass bottles, or other breakable items, and certainly no weapons of any kind, and that we reserve the right to refuse admission or to reject any person whose conduct is deemed to be disorderly. Again, no weapons, no alcohol into the festival. Bikes and skateboards have to be walked when they're on the festival grounds, and bags could be checked by security at the festival entrances. So again, we want everybody to have fun, but we want to keep the environment safe. And please reach out to us if you've got any particular questions. All of these changes are implemented, have been noted on social media as well. So again, feel free to take a look at the announcements also on the village website and the news letter. Back to you, Commissioner Patan.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. And one thing, mom and dad, to me, too, have a bag with all the candy the kids are gonna have for the parade. So you're not putting in your pocket, in your purse, so you get a jewel bag. Now, anything at home, is it love baggies, so the kids can collect their candy, and it'll make things a lot easier for our Public Works, too. So I'm sure I'll pick up all the extra candy, so, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Patan and Commissioner Polk. Thank you, Chief Miller, for working so hard with your staff to make sure that everyone is safe this weekend at Autumn in the Park. Moving on to Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Wade.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, my report, with the cooler weather approaching, residents with swimming pools are closing their pools for the season. And doing so is often necessary to drain water from the pool. Please make sure that when draining chlorinated water, that the water is directed onto your own property, and then to run off as non-train and your neighbor's property. If you have any questions, please contact the Building Department, 708-671-3730. And the Permit Department, the Building Department processed 14 permits from August 23rd to September 9th, 2023 resulting in $9,666.84. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Public Health and Safety Report, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Walter. So let's start with the Police Activity Report from 28th August through September 10th. The overall, 2023, we have 2,071 calls per service. That's by around average, it gives about 1,000 a week. 23 additional citizen assists, 16 case reports, and six accident vehicles. Arrested neither any adults nor any juveniles in impounded mill vehicles. 125 traffic stops, so that's up a bit. 43 moving violations, 29 medication tickets, 87 speeding tickets, and 23 parking violations. So that's what the Pales Park Police Department's been up to over the last couple of weeks. Again, I'd like to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, the 16th, 123rd Street, or McCarthy Road, will be closed between the grain for 96th Avenue or Route 45, or whatever you want to call it, and 80th Avenue from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM for the Autumn in the Park Parade. The parade starts at 11:00. Again, alternative groups are available on the website, but they, east and west would be 83, 119th, 131st. North and south access would be, 80th Street will be open, 86th is closed. 87th and 88th are all closed at 123rd. 81st, 82nd, 83rd, Mohawk, and 93rd are closed at 123rd as well. So come out, enjoy the parade, and the street should be open probably somewhere around 12:30, 1:00 or so. And then I have a couple of other quick announcements. Apparently, September is a pretty busy month, so we're making sure that you take a look at your personal safety, and some quick tips as the days get shorter this fall. So remember that you've got torchlights, and you can certainly leave them on, particularly since you can't buy any incandescent bulbs anymore. The LED bulbs are much more under due to pitch, and don't cost you very much money. Please don't leave your car running, it's actually a punishable offense. Be careful about leaving packages in plain sight. You can have them delivered to a neighbor or in a secure pickup location if you won't be home. Walk with purpose and have your car keys ready as you walk your vehicle. Carry your cell phone with you, consider installing alarms or video systems. And please lock your doors when you're in your home or when you're away. And then September also is national preparedness month. There aren't enough months to get all our own special events, so they double them up. So what is emergency preparedness? It's the first of the steps that are taken to be ready to respond and survive during an emergency. During an emergency, normal emergency services and utilities might not be available. So we talked about the Community Emergency Response Team or the SERP team. So you could certainly sign up and participate in the SERP team and learn some great skills that might be very useful to you in emergencies. Or here's some simple things that you can do to be prepared now. So create a plan. For example, an escape route from your house in the case of a fire. And then practice drills in your home. Become CPR trained, or become stop-the-bleed trained. All those trainings are available at little or no cost. Have emergency supplies somewhere that isn't inside your house. Also, think about putting a first aid kit, for example, like in the trunk of your car. So please think about what kinds of emergencies happen more typically than others, and try and think about what your plan is going to be to deal with them in the process. We already talked about Autumn in the Park and security measures. Chief Miller, anything you'd care to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service, Chief, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Accounts and Finances Report, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no formal report this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to the Mayor's Report, I do not have a formal report. Moving on to the Clerk's Report. Manager name, are we going for four?
Four to four.
All right, well, I'll move on to my announcements. The ZPA meeting scheduled for September 13th is canceled as there are no agenda items. The Historic Preservation Committee will not meet on Tuesday, September 19th, as there are no agenda items. The Library Board will hold a regular meeting Wednesday, September 20th, at 5:00 PM in the library. The Pales Fine Arts meeting is canceled for Thursday, September 21st. The next scheduled meeting is Thursday, October 19th. The Plan Commission will be holding regularly scheduled meeting on September 21st, 2023. On the agenda is Number 1, PC 2023-02, address 12344 Post Road, plant of consolidation and side yard setback variance. And Number 2, PC 2023-03, text amendment regarding permitted uses in the B1 and B2 zoning districts and special uses. As Rebecca said, the playground will be finished this week as soon as the weather allows it, and we will hold a ribbon cutting ceremony. So please watch out for an announcement on the village website or on your Simplicity app, which you all should have downloaded by now. Last weekend, I had the pleasure of visiting Share Your Souls Foundation, which was started by Mona Purdy right here in Pales Park. They're going on their 25th year this coming April. Share Your Souls collects new and gently used shoes to distribute around the world to those who urgently need them. There is now a donation bin located in the lobby of the Recreation Center. Please consider helping this incredible organization by donating some gently-used and clean shoes today. They also take monetary donations, which helps them deliver the shoes in person to the remote areas of the world. They just got back from the Ukraine, and they're heading to a very secluded place in the middle of the rainforest in Peru shortly. And one more time to remind you, those who have not done so yet, download the Simplicity app. It is free. It's the Village app, and you can stay up to date on what's happening in Pales Park and then show it on the park this weekend. Please look forward to seeing everyone there. And now, this is the point of citizen and visitor's comment period. This is a time for anybody in the audience that would like to address the council. Just remind you that we will not respond at this time because we do not know what you're going to be asking about, but we are happy to hear what you have to say and speak to you after the meeting. Would anybody like to address the council? Mona, Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Hansen, and I'm your recognition for the National Rail Safety Week. We need three signs that says "Alert Speeding Trains", and it really means speeding trains. The southbound is just disastrous, and if it ever hits the car, that vehicle or truck probably will travel 200 feet. They go as fast as 80 miles an hour. I've called their metric police before. We're being inside our building, and it's just overwhelming to see the way they speak that these people do, these engineers. There's no reason they should do that. And then they all had to stop at 143rd because that's where the connections are, where they go to one route that may happen. It's really bad, and we should use the alert. You can visualize 86th Avenue, as well as 135th Street, so we would join in with Orland, but it plus our own building. There is, because these trains will come, go stop, or stop, but actually, they stop down there while they do the switches. They don't have that problem, but we certainly have here. It's just unbelievable. Further north, they have the bridges, they don't seem to have that crossing issue. Should we ever have an impact, the entire train, nine cars, including one or two adjoining engines, mother in heaven, would be everywhere, just everywhere at your element. Because when you really look at those cars... Because when you really look at those cars, and there's these wheels sitting on those iron rails or steel, whichever it is, they only cover three inches, that's all they go down, it's not like a tire on a car. Three crazy inches, and you've got this huge top boxes sitting on top of it. That plus a speed of 80, 90 miles an hour, and why that pool, or the different engineers do that, southbound is unnecessary. It is, because they always manage to come back on time. If there's a train problem, it's down there where they have the switches, it's out of Manhattan, if the engineers late or conductors are late, we understand that. Or if the engines themselves break down. But for normal, daily, daily five days a week, 20, almost 24 hours a day transportation, beyond, God knows what happens at 10:25 and 10:26 when very few riders are on it. And they make these flag stops, so if they don't see a person out there, they're zooming down there to the next stop or pa- to wherever as they come to the conclusion. It's not good, it's not good, it's unreal. And those that are inside that building at 7:15 and 8:10 and 9:10, we sit there amazed that these engineers would do such a thing. How irresponsible. And not only that, but there's people inside, though, those states that'd be, well, or if they're sitting second floor and first floor levels of the cars, and oh my God, it would just be disastrous. Just as bad as the ones in Ohio, or worse, because Ohio, I think, was freight, but these are all people, and the people around them, oh my God, the car, those cars would be everywhere, just come and watch, be there at 7:15, make a 7:10. We should, our police officers, sit there with one of those nice radar guns and catch them, and you'll see them, and they're giving up a story. And be there like five days a week, the 7:15, the 8:10, and just plot that down, and you'll see, it's unreal. So anyway, that's why I'm up here. Anyway, and to remind the people at the train station themselves, because once these trains pass, which is another example, there's sometimes a three-minute delay between the two, so they would conveniently arrange for them to go down to Manhattan and back, vice versa. But people that don't know any better and don't pay attention to those flashy lights, which we had this past week. I told the store, do not move, do not move. I said, because the lights are flashing, and we had an inbound train that stopped and shut its lights off at 1:00, waiting for the southbound train to pass our, our building under their bridge, and then proceeded. I was watching this, it ran out the door, and Donnie, she's had her last day for pale sights. I said, don't you dare move, because we don't know what that inbound train's gonna do. And the lights are flashing, once against a lot of do it, but their life is in danger, stay there. Because she happened to come back, southbound, and was waiting to pass. She thought it'd be clear, I said, don't you move one inch. I said, we've seen too much of this trouble here, and you just can't count on what that big old train's doing down there with its lights off at 1:00. Shut it down, maybe, but it looked like it was shut down, but would you bet on it, the way they race up and down the street on our tracks? No, Jesus, no, terrible. Anyway, that's my concern, be a terrible thing, we've not had a tragedy in Pales Park, but that certainly would do it. At 86th Avenue and High 35th Street, though they had one at 143rd, 143rd, six years ago. And, uh, the family, Usher family, Mr. Usher was killed there at 5:00 PM by the Catalama Express, he was late for dinner. So anyway, that's my story.
Thanks, Nicholas. Anyone else like to address the council today? Well, again, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry.
Hearing the motion is second, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, everyone, see you at Autumn in the Park, thank you.
Take care, be safe.